We'll call the regular city council meeting for August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. First, we move the legislative meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections?
Most of them.
There's a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All is carried.
Can you pull that mic?
Next, we have the consent consent agenda, the minutes from the regular city council meeting June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Minutes from the special city council meeting July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Financial reports, city council table July twenty twenty-five. City financial statement July twenty twenty-five, and the liquor profit and loss statement July twenty twenty-five. Questions, comments?
Washington room.
There's a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All is carried. Public comment, this time is reserved for comment from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep comments to two minutes.
Well, we're still having some problems with ATVs over on Seventh Street. From what I can tell, a lot of them are coming out of the campground. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the little forest area by the old school. There's some walking trails in there. Lately, I've had to contend with ATVs in there. I've had, recently, I've had three girls, I would estimate to be twelve, thirteen years of age, out in front of my house arguing. Because one was on an ATV tour on scooters, and apparently the one on ATV almost ran over one of the girls on the scooter. And I've had a girl electric bike almost T-bolting me on my motorcycle, blowing through a stop sign on our road. And again, I watched where she came from, and she came out of the campground. So I don't know if this is something we get on the agenda, to maybe address it. I have called nine-one-one. And generally, the answer that I get is there's not an officer in the area, or not one available to deal with it. And I get that it's a low priority, but, you know, I get kids that ride their bikes up and down the sidewalk. And I try to keep them out of the streets, but, you know, it's, there's no adult supervision of these kids in these formulas. I see them go by my house three-way, you know, riding side by side. And like I said, they're making loops around the old school. Sometimes they're driving between the old, the ball field there and the old school and that sidewalk. Sometimes they're making circles up and down the main street, you know, just driving around in circles, coming out of the campground, so. Like I said, I can only call nine-one-one so many times because they're busy, so. I mean, it's the city's campground, so I don't know if there's something you guys can do along it, if you can put it on the agenda, maybe discuss this more. I don't know.
Probably put it on the park board agenda and have it discussed on that portion.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Do we have something when people are bringing their side-by-sides or four-wheelers to the campground? Do we have something they have to fill out? So we would be able to, we should maybe do something, I guess, to just think part for? I don't want to go camping when, if we got something we have to, um, slide some, so at least if it did, some of the license plate number and the tracks, some of these people are at the campsite. And the other officers available at that moment, let's do a five.
What type of information is recorded?
It's just attached to like their, their campsite. It would be the make, model, and license plate number. Because if they're on the road, they have a license button, so license number.
Maybe some information on what the rules are to.
On city streets.
On city streets, possibly a map where they can make it, how they can make it to the trail.
Because if they're doing damage in the, in the campground too, we want to know who to tend to.
Anything else? Any other public comment? Next, we have department reports. Call up the county sheriff's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You should have in your packet a report which, I don't know if I got the, it says in the sentence that it was for June of twenty twenty-five. But at the top of it, it is, it is July. So if you could just make that correction, it is for July. But you'll notice there was, um, broken out again by what contract deputies respond to, as well as separately what county deputies respond to outside of the contract deputies. Contract deputies, there was total calls, including self-initiated and calls for service. And which include the self-initiated would be the traffic stops and some of the extra patrol and extra details, community engagement. And then the actual calls for service and the medical calls, totally nine hundred and forty-four. And then for the county deputies, that was sixty-nine. If we have any questions on that specific report.
I was just looking at the ATVs on here, seeing how many complaints there. I saw a couple for hot rod. That, that was all right.
And I will let the, uh, make the squads aware that that complaint was made to the city. To keep an eye out for that when we are in the area as well. But that would be, I agree, would be helpful if, uh, they did have to provide that information at least. Just because they can't go right then and there, they can respond after the fact. And speak with us, particularly if you have twelve girls that are flying around on an ATV, so. They can certainly respond and speak with parents on that.
Any questions, Collins? Do you have any more?
Uh, we do have, nothing on the report at all. There are no questions. We do have a deputy experienced lateral hire that will be starting August twenty-fifth for training. And then we have two more in the final phases of their background process. And they should be starting hopefully shortly after that. One of them is an experienced lateral, and the other one is not. But just so you know, we will soon have three in training that will be starting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City superintendent, Phil Edner.
Mayor, members of council, Minister Owens. Now that Agad Days is done, we're kind of just getting ready to maintenance mode. We'll, uh, we'll start in the water department. The water department distributed seventy-two million gallons of water, even water in the month of July. Hydrofusion will be happening here at the beginning of September, so we may miss the next city council meeting for that update. So there'll be notices on Facebook and the paper. Taylor's really good at taking care of that, making sure everyone's aware as soon as we can, we can do. The water tower will be down for service at the end of the month. We're hoping for a week-ish. No water customers should experience anything abnormal in their water. Possibly a little disperation, but other than that, should be business as usual there. Sewer fund, the collection system collected thirteen point four million gallons of wastewater in the month of July. The annual sanitary sewer maintenance cleaning program is not complete yet. We've had a bunch of things happen and a lot of gear shifting, I would say, to, we had to kind of kick them on the back burner. So we'll be getting, getting that again hard here this fall. The treatment facility, that's doing its thing. We'll be starting September discharge, somewhere to the two to thirty to forty million gallons in September. So we'll be going through that process. Still, I haven't gotten a chance to get any trainings this summer. Hoping to get a couple of them this fall. See if we can look at some other options for, uh, for capacity or increasing our capacity of wastewater facility. That's where the bug thing came from, came from. Yeah, there's a lot of other good options out there that I want to try to get out there and research. Just haven't had an opportunity to get out there yet, so. From a street department right-of-way standpoint, road patching, we put on, we put down a lot of concrete the last two to three weeks. I think we're, we're almost close to two hundred yards now, so we're probably going to be short speed. We're almost, I would say we're probably done with that for the year. There'll be a little bit, little bit left, but those budget monies, I'm sure, are pretty close to being done for the year. Blacktopping, that'll really kick off tomorrow. We're going to start with our first round there. We got six or eight spots in town. And then obviously potable filling and crack filling and grinding in as well. So that'll be happening here just at the end of this month, beginning of next month. Nothing major reported on the equipment. The cemeteries, business as usual, summer maintenance and mowing. Just a reminder that the grave decorations do need to be picked up by the September fifteenth. That is posted on all the cemeteries that we have. Campground, Brian's going to touch on some of the financials on that here a little bit later. Other than that, from a maintenance standpoint, not too bad. Couple of small minor stuff, water service, we fixed that. That was last week, I believe. We got that taken care of. There was an electro pool issue today. We're working on, they're working on it right now, actually, so hopefully that'll be up and taken care of. Bathhouse, we got the beach house bathroom. They have a little bit of odds and ends to clean up there after the building is shut down for the year. Those are things we can't do until whichever day. So that'll be taken care of in October. Parks, I know Taylor and Ryan are going to talk a little more about that later. The arena, I know ICE is going in here, I believe, this weekend, I believe. Yes, so for that six-week window, that MOU that we had at the last council meeting. Storm sewer, we've had a lot of issues with some sewer failures here. I think there's been four of those repairs made. They were pretty spendy, but it is what it is. Gardening, Renee's going to touch on some stuff here a little bit. Recycling center, there's nothing to report. And I think that's it for right now, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. In this, electric store department report.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Mieszowski, Administrator Owens. The muni is full speed ahead. Right now, we're dealing with some media comment, television issues, so those are things I'll bring to the next liquor committee meeting. That's the next steps with that, so. I handed out, this is not in your packet, but I handed each of you a calendar. It's something that I'm implementing down there. The plan is to be three months ahead of schedule, and this will help from strategic planning to what we're doing, to social media, to the whole gambit. So we'll be filling this out and hopefully being three months ahead of schedule and all of that stuff. Any questions about this? This is just a basic look at it, so nothing on your set in stone, but you kind of get the gist of it. Any questions about it?
What's the flip off, Wednesday?
Oh, I can't tell you. Someone might steal that. If I say it out loud, and what it is, Barnum might be listening. Okay.
On the tour on the side.
Yeah, yeah, on the side, it tells you about it, so that's for a description of what would be on the calendar. Next, I'll touch base on the first annual customer appreciation event. So we are partnering with the Moose Lake Brewery. That is Saturday, August twenty-third, from two PM to six PM in the Moose Lake City Park. You'll see in your packet, the brewery is asking for application later on in the agenda. There's music by Savannah and Keith, three PM to six PM. Hot dog lunch by the Moose Lake Fire District, thank you. Games and activities, three-dollar drinks. Come on out. It'll be a fun time. Questions about that? And then we're also partnering with the brewery for Oktoberfest. That is Saturday, September twenty-seventh, at the First National Bank Arena. The first band hits the stage at five PM. We have that, I believe, handout as well. Ten-dollar pre-sale tickets, fifteen dollars at the door. I would also like to say we're doing a thirty percent off coupon code at the campground for that. And it's, we actually have several people that have already taken advantage of it. So if you're coming to the event, which I encourage you to do, go on to campspot.com. And when you're checking out, just type in the promo code OCTOBER, that's O-K-T-O-B-E-R, thirty, and get thirty percent off your stay. In looking at historical trends of the last couple of years, not a heavily attended campground day for that weekend. So hopefully this does what we want it to. Okay, I think that's it for the muni.
Any questions? Thank you. Technology department.
Technology department. Let's see, think about that. I helped Karen in the DMV take care of a direct-to-email feature for the passport machine, so that is up and working now. And last week, I met with Jim Pedersen at Water on Light and Asgard. They're an IT company. They say they do the whole gambit, the whole shebang. I'm not sure they do another municipality yet. So I sent them like kind of a forensic of everything program-wise that we do. Or by days ago, I haven't heard back yet, so. But it was a good first initial meeting anyway, so.
Any questions? Financial department.
Financial department. So I was asked, I don't know, a few weeks ago, to put together some event analysis for all of the holidays. For the liquor store and the campground. I'm going to start, I'll try and go in order here, what's in your packet, so you could follow along. So first up is Memorial Weekend for the muni. To try and answer some questions right off the bat. You'll see some terminology in there, like pro forma. That's kind of what I do before the event happens. So it's what we can expect to get out of it, based on historical trends or data. In this instance, because we don't have a lot of that tracking and background, I just use last year's actuals. So last year, twenty twenty-four, we did forty-two thousand, six eighty-four, seventy-three. And this year, thirty-nine thousand, four seventy-three, sixty-seven. So we lost a little bit there, but you'll see. Looks like Friday was better, Saturday, not so much, and then Sunday, Monday were about as normal. And that's Memorial Weekend for the muni. Any questions about Memorial Weekend? Okay, we're moving along. Fourth of July, so a little bit more to this pro forma and analysis, because we actually had allocated expenses towards it. So what I did was put it at expense percentage as a percentage of revenue. That's kind of how I've looked at stuff in the past. And nine in seven percentage is really good. So pro forma-wise for twenty twenty-four, we did fifty-three thousand, two seventy-three, thirty-two. And this year, fifty-eight thousand, six ninety-five, fifty-three. So we are up over last year, five thousand, four twenty-two, twenty-one, for the Fourth of July weekend. And we spent less this year. So we spent five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents less than we did last year and what we kind of expected. You'll see some things that have zeros on there. Those are just placeholders I put on there for if we do end up wanting to do that in the future. Spend towards advertising or those other expenses. Any questions on that?
The outside revenue.
Yeah, so I put that down there in the notes, just in case you want to see. So that was what we did for revenue outside this year.
What all constitutes outside revenue?
Bar sales.
What's that?
Bar sales. The band is playing. Give a drink, take five bucks.
Outside bar.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Moving on to Agad Days. Once again, we did twenty-eight thousand, five oh three, twenty-seven last year for the three days over Agad Days. This year, twenty-seven thousand, four forty, thirty-eight, so down a little bit, thousand bucks, basically. And then I also just took a look quick at the previous year when there was an Albu Fest. So in twenty twenty-three, we did twenty-six thousand, two ninety-nine, twelve. So we actually did a little bit better than that year, so. Take it for what it's worth, I guess. On your next handout, um, this will also aid us in strategic planning. So I took a good few hours to put this extensive spreadsheet together. So what you're looking at is only the top ten days of revenue for the liquor store for the past three years. So these are the days that had the highest revenue for us over the last three years. One note I would put is I don't see an Agad Days weekend on here, so really, it's dominated mostly by the Fourth of July. And then there's one Labor Day in there. I've been asking Mari what we did that day. That made that the fourth highest grossing day, and we can't figure it out. I don't know if it was a retirement party down there or what, but. Anyway, there's a spot for notes. Eventually, I'm going to hand this over to Mari, so she can put in the notes. Put anything from, was it raining out? Was, did we have a retirement party? Whatever, whatever took place on there, so we can strategically pan ahead for the future. This aid, this is, this comes from, from me, from what I used to do in the past. It really helps in strategic planning for the future when you're looking at, okay, December Wednesdays are really struggling. What have we done in the past? If I were to do that without this spreadsheet, it would take me a long time to figure out how did Wednesdays do? Because we don't have a, a report that would just cover that kind of stuff. So this spreadsheet will do that. We can look at seasonality, day of the week, specific holidays or special events, a lot of, a lot of things with this spreadsheet, so. And I look forward to bringing that to the liquor committee as well, if we want to take a look at it at any point. Any questions on that? Yeah? All right, now we're on to the campground, campground analysis. One thing I didn't put in here in the notes is, so when you're looking at this, these first set of groups of numbers are not containing, um, our seasonal people, understand? And you'll have to remember that we took seven of the water and electric sites off grid and gave it to seasonal people. So the actual reservation totals would probably be quite a bit closer in knowing that, so. That being said, Memorial Weekend, down twenty-four reservations, probably very close if you add back in those seasonal sites. And then income, just down a little bit. So this is total site income, the report that I used, so taxes aren't taken out or anything like that. Fourth of July. Down again a little bit, thirty-two reservations and a little over a thousand bucks. But again, I think another thing to note is, these holiday weekends, when you're looking at campground analysis, we feel it, it's full. So there isn't a whole lot to analyze, except maybe if I were to look at where are they coming from, or how are they making their reservations, maybe something like that? To try and plan for the future. Well, one thing it does tell us is, we could probably do with some more sites for these weekends. Because a lot of these weekends, even the dry sites are taken, so on the Fridays and Saturdays, anyway. And then Agad Days weekend, obviously, really full, down eighteen reservations, six hundred and thirty bucks. But then I decided to do an overall, just so you guys can see, with the seasonal numbers back in and reservation revenue. So when I plunk back in what the reservation revenue does for us, we are up through July thirty-first, twenty-six thousand, three forty-six, seventy-five. So from me, from an analyst standpoint, kudos to the, the team that had the foresight to increase the dollar amounts and transfer those sites over to seasonal people, because that really made a big difference, I think. And then, when I looked at the end of June, wood and ice was down, but we just had rock star July. And we're up now in both categories, twenty-five over twenty-four. Any question on the overall? Now I'm going fast. And this is not in your packet, but as a handout I gave you, I just did this this morning. Just one thing I want to key in on. So this comes from the campground analytics dashboard that I do with Campspot. And if you look at the KPIs in the weekdays and the weekends, it's kind of in the middle there. And then you see that word that says comp set, so that is what Campspot uses. They use, I'm not sure what the radius is, but they look at all of our competitors and what their occupancy rate is for the weekdays and the weekends. And you'll see that we're beating them up, so kind of interesting.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you. You have other information?
Yeah, a couple more financial things. I wasn't going to mention this, but maybe I can't remember if I did or not. The portal for the PTSD claims, I did submit all those, so they're just pending and waiting out for review, so just so you guys know that. All right, thank you.
City engineer.
Yes, the council received two sets of meeting minutes this month from our city engineering meetings. A pre-construction meeting did occur on July sixteen, to which the trail project was discussed. Senate contracting has started construction on the trail. There was a little bit of an issue that we've encountered regarding some additional tree removal that needs to occur. And we are outside the season of when those removals can be done without additional process, based on northern long-eared bats and the protections that are in place for the bats. So what we've been doing in the background is Senate contracting has been working around a specific area of the trail. In the meantime, we've had relevant state departments and staff on site to do some inspections of the additional nine trees that need to be removed in order to complete a section of the trail. And so trying to be as efficient and as effective as we possibly can with planning and working around it. We did have somebody on site inspecting today. There were four trees that needed a little bit of additional assessment, and so we're working through that. There, there could be implications that the trees cannot be removed, um, as far as timeliness of trail completion of the project. So we are working through those challenges, and we'll have more updates to provide council with as we move through this. Hoping to actually hear in the next twenty-four hours what the final verdict is regarding those four trees in question. And I will provide council with an update via email on that. Any questions? Please feel free to let me know, but that is something, a challenge that has arose that we are working through. And we're hoping that the project does not have to be extended, but if it does, then we will address it at that time. In addition, um, the city has executed a grant agreement with the MPCA for the seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars stormwater or storm sewer inventory and analysis project. We'll see that supplemental letter agreement from the engineers later on in the packet. And I also wanted to mention from those meeting minutes, the Minnesota Department of Health has, um, is facilitating lead service analysis replacement all over the state. And so as far as the city of Moose Lake's engagement goes, MDH is now contracting directly with our engineer group in order to facilitate the remaining inventory mechanisms that need to take place in the city. And so how, um, the city will be involved from a facilitation standpoint is, our engineers will provide us with the necessary documents to inform residents of process moving forward. There's a portal established, any unknown services, and I believe there's only a little over a hundred left. Any unknown service types, those residents will be contacted, and they'll be able to enter information into a portal in order to determine whether or not they could potentially have a lead service. And then there'll be support if they would prefer an onsite inspection. So there's a lot of work done that was done preliminary through our public works department, so hats off to them. We are far ahead of other communities as far as where we're at in the inventory process. Ours will be relatively minimal compared to the scale of other communities, but we do have over a hundred that we need to address remaining. And so you'll see information come out on the city website, city Facebook, as this portal gets launched specifically for the city of Moose Lake. We'll engage in that, and we'll be able to answer questions and have information and resources available for residents at that time. All other items, I think we're going to work through on other aspects of the agenda. The next, oh, uh, the city will be meeting with QuickTrip and the engineers on August nineteenth pertinent to the stormwater retention pond of that QuickTrip, which will then have to be a collaborative effort between the city and QuickTrip. What that looks like moving forward, we'll have an agreement to present to council once we get closer to defining how that looks. But the purpose and intent of the meeting is to establish, um, the city's utilization of that stormwater retention pond for drainage from the residential development. that stormwater retention pond for drainage from the residential development. So we are working through that. We do have a meeting scheduled on August 19th for that. And then the next engineering meeting will occur on September 3rd. As always, if there's any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Who owns that retention pond right now?
That is a great question. We're working through that. Yeah. Documentation has been difficult to come by, but both parties are highly engaged and willing to kind of sort it out and what are the needs moving forward. So there'll be some type of easement and/or ownership agreement that talks about maintenance and things like that as we proceed. So we will have to reestablish those terms. But that's been an interesting dynamic as we've researched and as QuickTrip has researched too. So there were certain filings that are, we cannot access or can't find, so. We'll be starting from scratch a little bit, but they also are very experienced with their retention ponds, as it has been a requirement for a lot of their sites. Their sites are relatively big, and so there is the potential that other agreements are already in place that we can utilize as templates to try and save some time and energy, but we're working through those details.
Thank you. Any other questions? Chamber of Commerce report?
Council members, Mayor Matuski, Administrator Owens. Thank you for having me. At our meeting this afternoon, we went over various events. Since the last council meeting, mostly what we covered was Aga Days. And for Aga Days, we are currently doing a recap with all of the different groups that work together. And for the city, there were safety concerns that we are looking at. And kids area, we'll be doing their recap Zoom tomorrow at noon, so we'll have all of that together and have a more complete report for September. Brew Fest was a part of Aga Days Weekend, and it currently has not grown as much as, it hasn't grown at all since previous years, so we are probably going to move that off Aga Days Weekend, so that would be one less item going on there. 99 Golf went off very well, that was on Friday, July 25th. The Moose Lake Triathlon was canceled. Unless we find a new race director that wants to actually take over that, we will not be doing the triathlon anymore. Date change for Bingo was on Saturday, August 23rd. It is now moved to September 19th. We also discussed National Night Out, and the chamber will now be more of a partner with the city in getting National Night Out more advertised and coordinated. The main thing that the chamber really needs is volunteers. We had a historical turnout for Aga Days, and the city, I mean, God bless everybody in the city because everybody did great. I mean, Phil, thank you so much. Historical turnout, we are making adjustments and changes for all of the people who came in town. And we've had a few Facebook complaints about, mostly it was around little children, that they weren't, they were new and they didn't know that the stampede was really a stampede. And we're kind of surprised with that. But other than that, we've had hundreds of compliments on how many people had such a good time and it was so great. And so a lot of that is thanks to the city and the fire department and everybody working together. And we're going to go through and recap what we can change and what improvements need to be made and kind of do an overview of that tomorrow.
Any questions for the chamber?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Previously discussed business, Straight Line Survey, Alley Survey Discussion.
Yes, so what council received in the packet was the official report provided by Straight Line Survey of the alleyway. That has been a part of previous discussions. In addition, there was a map included. So it was determined based on the survey that there was a fence belonging to, belonging to a resident that was infringing on the city's alley right of way. And so since then, that property owner has been contacted and the request was made to move the fence off of the city's property. We now have markers back there establishing the city's right of way. And so that process has been completed.
Any questions, comments? The city Moose Lake ordinance amendment update.
Oh yes, so, Tara and I have been working really hard on ordinance amendments. And what occurred since the last meeting is that three ordinances have been prioritized and sent to the city attorneys for review. And so amendments were made based on dialogue, city office administrative review, and council interactions and need. And so all of that was considered, also our interactions and discussions with the county attorney played into the modifications and amendments that were made. We have sent those off to the city attorneys, they are working on them, they are going to assess, review, modify format, and then send them back to us. We have been asked to have an internal meeting with them via Zoom in order to, you know, have some additional dialogue on that, so the city staff will take part in that. And then we'll bring those three amendments back to city council for final review and potential adoption. What's happening in the background is there were six total that were identified as immediate need. We did it in two batches of three, we'll now continue to work through the other three. We do have some ideas as far as ways to maybe combine and modify in a way that there may not be a need to have ordinance revisions for every single ordinance that we want to modify if we combine and/or adopt statute and other options. So we are reviewing the next three, that's in process, and the three that have been prioritized, the nuisance, use of property, and animal, have gone off to the city attorneys for review and will be brought forward.
Questions?
Did we express the need to be attorneys that, especially the nuisance one? We have, it's super high priority, I know that you took that as one of the three, but we obviously have people here.
Yep.
We've got a lot of complaints, so.
Yep.
Any updates that we can get, maybe if we're going to forego having the three meetings, maybe we could have a special meeting, so they're not waiting another month, another people aren't waiting another month.
Excellent. The attorneys are very responsive, they would like to establish a meeting in the next couple of days here. They've already taken through some dates and times for availability, so it is absolutely a priority.
Yes, I have a quick question. Was there still going to be like a quiet hour thing or something there?
So the nuisance ordinance doesn't incorporate a quiet hour, quiet hour times, but it's also, there's also verbiage in the nuisance ordinance so that even, even outside of quiet hours, there can be enforcement on volume and things of that nature. So it won't just be specific to the quiet hours, there'll be verbiage that discusses volume and noise from a macro standpoint, but then also identifies quiet hours.
One of the new things we're dealing with is basketball at 2:00 AM.
There is, there is, thank you for that information. There is quiet hours in the proposed.
Any other questions? Moving on, city Moose Lake gravel pit permit update.
Oh yes, what the council received in the agenda packet is the approved NPEES permit. So the city's gravel pit has officially been approved from a permit perspective. Next steps and what council will see moving forward is test holes will need to be drilled and will be, Phil has been working on getting mining and stripping quotes to bring forward to council. Hopefully in September, we haven't had, there's not been enough window in order to accomplish the test holes and the, getting, acquiring the quotes in addition to since this has been approved. So working on all those things in the background, those are the next steps, and then we'll bring those quotes forward to council further. Just to provide an update too, we've worked through establishing a gravel pit fund as an entrepreneurial fund for the city, so just like the water sewer, liquor, and DMV. And so from an accounting perspective, those activities are happening in the background. And then at that point in time, you're establishing your fund from a monetary perspective. I believe there's about $339,000 based on council's appropriations previously that are in the fund, and so we'll make sure we have continued visibility for council on fund balance moving forward.
Any questions? Old school playground, old school playground, we quit the discussion.
Yeah, so at the last city council meeting, you asked that I go and get a new quote to cover all three of the playgrounds, so that's what this updated quote is. I also contacted several, I think five other places, and I either didn't get a response or we don't do the inspection part, and they recommended IEA, so, and we might be dealing with, they're the only game in town. As you can see with the updated quote, I mean, it's only an extra few hundred dollars for them to stop at the other park, so most of that must be travel. So it went from 1360 to 1900 bucks for all three.
What's that?
How much was it originally?
1360.
1360.
Now 1,000 to 900.
Any questions?
That's for all three.
Yes, for all three, they're all listed on here, page two.
Any further comments?
I'll make a motion with the proposal for the playground inspection for 1900.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
All right, well, thank you, we'll get them here and I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. New business, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Tree Inventory and Management Plan
Council, mayor, and Elizabeth, Councilor Owens, Administrator Owens, sorry about that. We had our, I'm going to get it right eventually.
It's a rough start.
So anyway, good evening, everyone, council members, mayor, Administrator Owens. We had a Zoom meeting on Monday with Madison Mattasucci from DNR concerning our grant. We just wanted to give you guys a brief update on what's happening and give you a little peek into the future as well. And then I believe you're going to bring that to the table to make sure we want to move forward. We've been approved for a $35,000 grant to include an additional amount to top out at That includes a tree management plan, an inventory plan, and then that information will set us on track for ash tree removal for the Emerald Dashboard, and then replanting of those trees. So all of those funds will be going towards, towards that. We have the additional funds in case anything weird, wild, or wonderful pops up, and that includes labor, that includes any tree bags that we might need or any kind of necessary equipment that we, that we could run into. We are allowed to make amendments to that initial $35,000 as we progress through that. When we had the meeting with Madison, we also reviewed any questions that we had concerning repayment of funds as we progressed through the process. All of the vendors that we were planning on using are, have been pre-approved by them tentatively, and then I've reached out to them, and so we're starting to look at getting things scheduled, so that as soon as we docu-sign the documents that we have and the rest of the process is completed, we'll be ready to hit the ground running. We also discussed future funds for the public that may be coming available. They're going to let us know when that, those funds become available, so that people in the city will have an opportunity to have their own ash trees removed. This is hugely important because, just because it's not on city property doesn't mean that it can't affect us. So we want to make sure that as soon as that, those funds are released and that grant is open, that we're going to be able to have access to that as well. The city will apply for that grant, and then will become available to the public, as I understand it. So more information coming on that. After we propose this to you guys tonight, if it's approved, we should be ready to go within the next couple of weeks according to what the DNR is saying. Any questions?
Thank you, Renee. This project, the scope of the project does run out through October 1st of 2027, so it's going to be a process over a couple of years. As Renee mentioned, we do have the ability to submit on a monthly basis for reimbursement as soon as expenses are incurred towards these activities. So the turnaround time that the city floats, the expense is very short. We made sure that we discussed that process and are in tune with that, with this type of grant. I, in my role, think that these efforts are absolutely fantastic. There are other communities that have been just ravaged from the Emerald Dashboard, and this is a way for the city to try and get ahead of it. We would not be able to engage in these activities without this type of money, so I just wanted to thank Renee for her efforts. This is huge. These are, these are activities that occur in big cities with a lot of money, and we're able to now engage in this type of proactive activity based on Renee's efforts. So it's excellent. We're going to commit to helping from an administrative perspective with anything needed for reimbursement, and it'll be a process that takes a couple of years, but then we'll be able to handle what's coming from the Emerald Dashboard perspective in the community and try and get ahead of it with replanting.
One of the interesting things too with this tree management plan and the inventory that we're going to do, they'll literally be able to identify the very worst of the trees that pose the biggest danger. That would be tree 001, for example. So as we work with our tree removal company, they'll be targeting, we'll use that plan together and they'll be targeting the worst of the worst, like the campground or something that's next to a road, or something that could really cause damage to personal life or property. So I really like that part of the plan moving forward, and we can use that for many other things as well, because then we'll have a real, true concept of what we're dealing with going forward.
There are species recommendations regarding replanting, and so we'll make sure that we align with the replanting requirements from the species perspective, and then, you know, can plan for what that looks like, and in areas where there's critical city infrastructure or things of that nature, we can make sure that the types of trees that are being replanted are not going to affect infrastructure and other items.
They're trying to eliminate another elm, Dutch elm disease, and another Emerald Dashboard, you know, tragedy, if you want to call it that. So diversification and trying to stay native when we can, but also diversify and make the city beautiful and viable.
Any other questions, comments?
So, somebody's got a tree that's a rough shape, but this is like for Emerald Dashboard, Emerald, I mean ash trees?
Correct.
So if somebody had a question... So if somebody had a question, who would they get ahold of to maybe make sure that that's what they have going on?
They can call me.
They call you?
They can contact Public Works Department, and they'll communicate with me, and we'll, I'll meet with the owner, and we'll discuss it, and I'll help them as much as I can.
And then you could make recommendations about what they want to replant?
Correct.
And just to be clear, this initial grant is for trees on city property. There's a second phase that we are engaging in that would then allow the city to apply, and residents would have access to trees on their prior property. So two phases, from a funding perspective, from a funding mechanism, this is one, phase one, for city property, and a city management and planning report, and then there'll be a secondary phase that we, Renee has already engaged with the D N R as well.
I was curious as to whether the old school forest is included in this.
Well, they will be able to, I've already talked to Kelly Tuttle about that with Blue Step Forestry, and that's one of the areas that, as we ride around, and the inventory gets completed, that'll be an area that we can discuss. It's not gonna be, monies won't be affected by that, but it will certainly give us some information about what we need to do moving forward for the health of that area.
Okay, and one more question. We had talked about starting a tree committee at one time. Where are we at with, with the tree committee?
Are you volunteering?
We, we discussed that, and, 'cause I'll be heading that up, and we
Was Lou, Lou, were you?
Lou is definitely gonna be on it. And we've, we've been waiting, holding off until, until we get this grant locked up tight, and then we'd like to move into that and start having some discussions surrounding that. I think it's, I think it's critical that we do that. And it's also, as we're a C Tree, Tree City USA city, that's something that really we should have been doing, so that's gonna fall into both categories that help us out there as we, as we move forward.
Thank you.
I believe we need a motion to accept this grant.
Correct. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Roy Peterson, Memorial Park, discussion.
Yes, so the city has been engaged with Essentia Health regarding a three-year partnership and initiative to make updates and improvements to a city park. Essentia Health did a review of the city parks, and the intent was to improve upon a park that was centrally located in the community and used primarily by the community residents. They did identify Roy Peterson Memorial Park as the park to which they would like to collaborate on. What the three-year partnership looks like is a ten thousand dollar commitment for three years, totaling thirty thousand dollars. And so what this looks like for this particular year is city staff has engaged on, you know, a strategic plan with Essentia as to prioritizing what improvements to make. If you remember, from the budget perspective, the city did allocate ten thousand dollars of city budget for park improvements outside of the campground. And so the discussion at the park board level has been to, at least for this first year, match funds with Essentia to essentially have twenty thousand dollars worth of monies to commit to this year's revitalization component. Moving forward, we have not obligated that ten thousand dollar budget item for the next two subsequent years with Essentia. That'll be, you know, up for discussion and/or planning. But for this year, what it, what has been established with the park board is there's two quotes in the council's packet for removal and repaving of the basketball court at Roy Peterson. Those quotes are coming in right around ten thousand dollars. In addition, we are looking at quotes for striping and a new basketball hoop, and so we'll bring those forward to park board and council regarding the city's commitment of ten thousand dollars. However, if we get approval tonight of the repaving quotes, this is something that Essentia Health is looking to contribute to, their ten thousand dollars for this calendar year. In addition, I included in the packet, they have installed a counter on the fence at, at the park, and what they're looking to do is to see how these efforts over the next three years increase traffic at the park. So they're taking numbers constantly, and then they're going to look at park attendance and usage over the next three years as these efforts increase and come to fruition. So wanted council to have visibility to that. So again, striping and basketball hoop quotes will be going to the park board and to council here in September. What's on the table right now is two quotes for repaving. One is from Roth Construction in the amount of ten thousand dollars. The other is from Cominsky Paving, and that came in at eleven thousand dollars. Once, with council approval, again, these costs would be forwarded on to Essentia Health. We've discussed that they do have the ability and capacity to just cut the check separate. What we're looking from council is to approve the park board's recommendation to proceed with repaving, and then, you know, from a monetary perspective, those other items would come forward in September.
Any questions? Did the park board make a recommendation on who should go with?
Yes, Roth. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we need to accept Roth Construction for the Roy Peterson Park Basketball Program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Are there none in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Quick Trip Opportunity Drive E V charging station discussions.
Oh yes, this is just for council's information. Quick Trip has been in contact with the city and Moose Lake Power regarding the installation of E V charging stations at the Quick Trip on Opportunity Drive. The funding is in conjunction, it's a partnership between MinDOT and the Department of Energy. The Department of Energy has a NEVI program, an E V I, and so Quick Trip was awarded monies to participate in this project through MinDOT and the Department of Energy. And so what it looks like is the installation of four E V chargers. In addition, there'll be six parking stalls that will also be added to, you know, accommodate for the, the charging stations on one side of the parking lot, and then additional customer parking on the other side. We have gone through a review from a city perspective as far as, you know, the property is zoned correctly, already zoned correctly for, for usage. The building official has been involved. There are no city ordinances that pertain to the installation of the E V chargers, and so working hand in hand with this engineer group and Water and Light to make sure that all aspects and needs and communications are occurring.
Any questions?
Resolution number twenty-five dash oh eight dash oh one, a resolution authorizing two-hundred-and-twenty-two-six capital budget request issued.
Oh yes, so council has viewed these resolutions previously. These resolutions are needed for capital budget requests from a state perspective, bonding bill requests, and so we were able to submit a twenty-two-six bonding bill request without an updated resolution, just based on the nature of what's happened over the last two years with the legislature. But for technical sake, we do have a window to where we do need to have a new one approved, and so this is that. This will cover the twenty-two-six bonding bill request regarding the citywide lighting project.
Questions? Make a motion to accept resolution number twenty-five oh eight oh two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Short Elliot's supplemental letter agreement, this small, this planning grant.
Yes, so as council was informed, the city did receive a N P C A grant for stormwater, wastewater, and community resilience activities from the N P C A. This supplemental letter agreement essentially establishes the project with S E H in order to conduct those activities, and the fee is the amount that the city has been granted, so to speak, with the, or awarded with the grant in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Questions? Is there a motion to? What do you want, a motion to accept it?
Yep, to accept the letter, the supplemental letter agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Supplemental letter agreement for the trail project.
So this trail project, planning started back in twenty-twenty-one for the trail project. Over the course of time, there has been an increase in cost and activity, so there were a lot of unplanned experiences with this project, to be very transparent, and then just over the course of the last four years, costs have increased significantly. We have been informed by the engineer group that we need a amendment to the existing contract to which is an increase of seventy-five thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Essentially, the engineers have provided a letter to the city in exhibit one that outlines what those additional fees are for, and what is needed in order to complete the trail, and what has transpired over the last couple of years regarding the increased costs versus the original estimates at, at the time of bid. And so in addition, what we're doing in the background from administrative perspective is we've asked S E H to engage with us regarding a reimbursement from the D N R for our engineering costs to current on the trail project. And so the engineers put together a summary of our incurred costs thus far from an engineering perspective pertinent to the trail only. At this time, the eligible total is eighty-six thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. So administrative staff has been working to submit our first grant re, or grant reimbursement through the D N R in that amount of eighty-six thousand dollars. So essentially, when we cut this check for seventy-five thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, we'll be getting the grant reimbursement on the backside. So that is the process that the city staff is engaging in at this time.
Any questions? Motion to approve the supplemental agreement?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Joint Powers Agreement.
Oh yes, so council received in their packet the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement. This is not a new agreement for the city, it's just new terms as far as timelines are concerned. Looking today to have a motion for approval of the resolution, the resolution takes care of the Joint Powers Agreement. Just to provide a little bit of summary as to what all is in the agreement, it is lengthy. The agreement gives the city secure access to the Minnesota's criminal justice network and B C A systems under strict security policy and record-keeping requirements, and the B C A can suspend or terminate access for violations. The city must maintain, you know, appropriate data practices, activities, and things of that nature. Essentially, we are working with the county on these agreements now, as our internal city dynamic has changed with law enforcement services, but there's still a need to facilitate this particular agreement with the state.
Questions? Motions? Motion to accept resolution twenty-five oh eight oh two.
Second.
Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, carried. Court Gadda Services Subscriber Agreement.
So this also goes hand in hand. Again, we've been engaged with the county and the appropriate state entities on this one as well. Essentially, this agreement allows this, the prosecuting attorney at the county to use B C A systems to access court records with strict security confidentiality and usage rules. City must ensure only authorized personnel use the systems and/or authorized organizations, and follow all court policies, protect confidential information, and destroy materials, store and destroy, destroy materials as needed or as defined by state law.
Any question? I need a motion.
I need a motion to approve the Corvita Services Subscriber Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moose Lake Brewery Company, application for temporary unsanated liquor license.
As Ryan had mentioned, there's gonna be a first annual customer appreciation event. It's going to be August twenty-third. This is for the brewery in order, for them to have a temporary license to be able to sell on city property for that event.
It's gonna be off the hook. Any questions? Motions?
I'll make the motion to approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. First National Bank Arena Moose Lake Arena attended, John posting discussion.
Yes, so with the early ice coming on, the city would like, the city staff would like to take advantage of training opportunities on the, on the early ice if this is going to work out. Looking to post the arena attendant positions as we do every fall now. We will be engaging with the personnel committee to see if anybody's interested in, in attending interviews after the posting process occurs, and then we'll bring hires forward to the council, but looking for approval to post.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Parks and Correspondence, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency Petroleum Tank Release, file closure notice, Lavery Hood Remote Meeting Attendance, Open Meeting Lot Changes, and Melissa Halls in Campground Customer Correspondence. Any questions on any of those?
Just like to make sure, you know, Greg and Olen has done a fantastic job in the campground, and he was given a pat on the back from some of our, our guests at the campground, so I have talked to Greg, and he does a great job.
Committee and Board Meeting Minutes, the Park and Recreation Board Meeting Minutes from July seventh, twenty-twenty-five, the Parks and Rec Board Meeting Minutes from August fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
You didn't receive the fire district?
Not from July and not from yesterday.
I received, I received them from July, so I'm surprised that you're gonna get that.
I can request them.
They came real early.
A announcement, Moose Lake City's Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, September tenth, twenty-twenty-five, four P M here. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, August twentieth, at twelve P M in the conference room. Moose Lake Water and Light, Tuesday, August nineteenth, one P M, Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Monday, September eighth, at Hillside Manor Office. Moose Lake Area Fire Protection District, Tuesday, September ninth, six-thirty P M at Emergency Response Center. Moose Lake Parks and Rec, Monday, September eighth, five P M, at the City Council Changes. And is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.